Jello again, this is Ben Hitchcock Cross talking to you today for Deliberate Indifference Wisconsin. We are going to go over the school board meeting from yesterday, that's February 23rd of 2023. We are gonna just take a look at the brief, let's say, board interaction. We can't quite call it deliberations in terms of the remote work policy. So to back that up a second, we've got a original source from Matt Chason at a previous board meeting stating that he had some ambiguities. So it seems like that was in connection with some broader board member director criticisms. But, you know, the big theme here on this issue is that when you look at the board, what they do is they just approve things and then they have some secret plan or stated intention to look or change or do something down the road, okay? So that just doesn't work and it just lets management Posleism run rampant. But beyond that, I think here we're gonna see that they fundamentally don't understand Robert Rules of Orders, they're being pushed around by Jackie Mann, the board clerk, and certainly they just are not doing anything. I mean, they have a job to do, they're clearly unsatisfied, but they seem to think that their job is just to rubber stamp these things, even though they're stated that they're unhappy, underwhelmed, I think is the direct quote, and they just keep going from there. So what else did you expect? I think we'll see some obvious inabilities for management to answer simple, basic questions about this. And then, of course, this story all goes down to Marla Bruni, the person that Calvin Furman, Attorney Calvin Furman accused and Deputy Superintendent accused supposedly of fraternizing with. So she is supposedly the director of remote work, of course, they won't even say her name out loud, and they pretend like she has no, nothing to do with anything. So after six months, she came up with a full one-page, it still isn't clear, and they had to violate, you know, the procedures of the board in order to get this through. So we'll see that happen in real time here. So that's the synopsis, and we'll go from there. I do wanna say, and I think I'll have another video, that I went to the school board meeting yesterday, and really, the response could not have been more hostile. And I think we'll go over other issues as well, but I just wanna be clear, there was four security guards there, there was a security guard following me everywhere I went, there was two security guards who were just posted on either side of the board, you can't see them on the television there, but the entire people in attendance were two, non-NPS employees or student. So that was, I mean, I guess a two-to-one security guard advantage is something that the taxpayers need because the board is in danger, I don't know what. But, you know, they were all great guys and, you know, they're workers and who's, they got a job to do, right? So no problem there, hey guys. My point is, is that it's obviously intimidation tactics and, you know, not against me personally per se, but it just conveys the message, shut up and take it, and we tell you what to do, and we've got security that'll back us up, you know? It's just one more example of Posleism, which is violence in the defense of incompetence. So, but it was good to see faces, it was good to be in the places, and I think we're gonna have a good time here. So let's see if the technology works and we'll go on from there. All right. So we are, they started 15 minutes late, they went into closed session for an hour and 15 minutes. Mostly it seemed like they were just standing around in the closed session and just sort of having fun and extra snack time or something, so that didn't seem very productive for the audience, but hey, it was really unusual, because usually they wait till the end, certainly usually they do the minutes first, but there's a lot about this meeting that was revised, and, you know, it had a lot to do with my presence, there's just no question about it. So let's see what they have to say about remote work policy.
Thank you, are there any questions on the part of the board? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, what's the next item of business?
The next item of business?
That's Jackie Mann.
Action on the reports of the independent hearing officers of the Milwaukee Board of School Directors, Student Expulsions.
The Chair will entertain a motion to accept, modify, or reject the reports of the independent hearing office.
All right, we're back on, let's do it.
What is, Madam Secretary, what's the next item?
Mr. Chair, we are now back to the items that were set aside. The first item set aside is the report on the Committee on Accountability, Finance, and Personnel, item number four, action on a request to incorporate a remote work provision in the employee handbook. The administration recommends that the board approve the attached remote work provision to be included in the employee handbook. Your committee forwarded this item to the board without recommendation. Subsequent to the committee's discussion, the administration provided a revised attachment, which is attached to this item.
So normally what would happen there is the committee, then the revision would then go back to the committee, and then we would have public comment, we would have more further discussion on the revision, and then we would go from there. So what the, what's being voted on here is not actually what the committee sent to the board without recommendation, it's the secret arrangements between board members and administration, their feedback, that's not public, about what they want in this policy. So we're gonna hear about what they want.
Thank you, does the administration wish to comment at this point?
Chair Peterson, members of the board, Adrian Madaleni, Chief Human Resources Officer. Yes, just wanted to highlight the changes that we made based on our discussion last week at AFMP. We tried to provide some clarity with regards to eligible employee, I think there was some concern saying centrally assigned, people might not be too familiar what term that means, so we added the phrase "non-school-based" to provide a little bit of clarity there.
House of Matriarchism.
And also, we removed the specific references to finance, human resources, and technology.
Too bad for that, huh?
We understand that the goal is to incorporate and review other areas and departments, so it's clear in this language for the handbook that it's not limited to the three areas, and the administration is prepared to start that work with the different areas to determine what positions in the different offices and departments would be eligible and suitable for remote work.
Yeah, that just leaves it up to them. So they're, you know, they got caught because they couldn't define it properly, so now they're just saying, okay, well, we know, we'll do central services, and then we'll think about everybody else whenever we get around to it. And, you know, whenever we get around to it, they just don't have a good track record on that, so that's, I'd say, more than anything, the biggest problem there.
And we also included a review process, so if an employee does feel that their remote work request was denied and they want to have a second set of eyes on it, a review...
Or get retaliated against, for example.
...on the canned request that the chief of that office can review their request and then decide if it will be approved or not.
Thank you very much.
That'll really help things.
Any comments or questions? Yes, Director Gokul Gandhi.
So I just, I have to say after reading the reporting, it is a little bit unfortunate that this is a one-pager that was provided after eight months of work, I would have expected to see a more robust sort of analysis of what is happening and...
Those directors don't look happy.
...what we're gonna do moving forward. I realize we can talk about it in this setting, but it's just, I feel a little underwhelmed by what is presented, so I just feel like I had to say that.
Well, the key phrase that I took from that was "in this setting," because I wanna know what other setting she's talking about, because if she's talking about closed session, that's a big problem. Yeah, that's a big problem. If there's, the communications from board members, from the board, rather, to administration needs to be happening in public so that there can be democratic oversight by the public on those communications and decisions. So that's, that phrase there is very troubling to me.
Okay.
You know, besides the fact that she's underwhelmed.
I'll pass the gavel to Seemson.
So noted. President Peterson.
I just would like the administration to explain or tell us what employee who thinks...
What was wrong with explaining?
...eligible for this has to do to, what would be the steps that they would take to alert whomever and get the process going.
So the big problem I have with this is the tone. This is not a statement of a master to a servant, okay? And the reason I use those terms is that's what we say in employment law in terms of the boss to the employee, okay? So those terms go back to England, and that's how they used them, and I wanna be clear here, this is a boss to an employee, that's what we'd say, you know, in common parlance, that's what this is supposed to be, this is not that tone. This is a pretty please, and which I feel is just inappropriate as a representative of the city of Milwaukee to the city of Milwaukee's employees. I wouldn't, the tone that I would use on that, the way I would rephrase that question is, tell us why this hasn't been done. Explain to us why there's only one page. Explain to us the plan for getting this properly taken care of, and do it now. And that's, I think, more than anything else, that tone here is what should indicate to everybody that this isn't serious oversight.
Ms. Madaleni?
Chair Seemson, members of the board, Adrian Madaleni, Chief Human Resources Officer. There is a process where there's a request form that we're going to make public...
Oh, that'll be nice.
...on our HR website, and the employee would use that form to submit to their supervisor, and then at that point, supervisor would review it, and then it would be provided to Human Resources, whether be approved...
That was probably Posley looking over at me. Where's that in the policy? Where's that in the handbook? That's gonna-be's. That's not, gonna-be's are not how you, you don't put gonna-be's in front of a board. You put, "This is what we're going to do and we're committing to this." And then, so you can approve what we said that we're gonna do and what we're committing to it, not some, let's say, nebulous future conception. That's not democracy either.
Or denied, and then we would go from there. So the employee would have the process, have the form which outlines the guidelines, terms and conditions of participation of the program, and then at that point, the supervisor would do an analysis of the request, and then it would be approved from there.
And we can see here what, I mean, the reason that I'm skeptical of HR having discretion over really about anything here, just because of their track record of discrimination, harassment, use of the Milwaukee Police Department, force, intimidation, all of these kind of tactics here to beat down the workers of the city, specifically the schools.
Thank you for that answer. One other question is, in terms of the number of days that a person, per week, the person might be able to work virtually, is there any thought that there might be flexibility on that, to say if we found a position that was hard to fill, but that person lived in another state, would we, would there be a process by which exceptions could be made? You see, I'm trying to go with, especially if we haven't been able to fill a position that's important to be filled and can be done virtually, of course, that would be an assumption.
Administration?
Chair Seemson, members of the board, Adrian Madaleni, Chief Human Resources Officer. Currently, the policy says it's three days per week as a max. Again, this is a starting point for us, and as we move forward, we are in the process, you know, we're gonna have surveys and we're gonna communicate with people that are on remote and see what changes we can make to the program if needed, to expand.
But this isn't rocket science, and I think the directors are, can sniff this out. We're not starting from day one, this isn't 2021 here, we're well into this process of remote, I think we've been doing this, you know, as a species in one way or another for at least 10 years here. So this concept of starting over from scratch, or that we need all this input from the stakeholders before we can make a real decision, first of all, isn't that Marla's job? Why, I mean, seriously, this is the point, it should have already happened, this nebulous "we'll get around to it" stuff just leaves, gives them the ability to do nothing, further ability to do nothing.
In your particular scenario, we have a provision in our policy that you have to work in the state of Wisconsin. There is some tax issues, if there's someone that's working outside of state and our payroll department is not able, at this point, to handle that, that's a bigger discussion to see what we would have...
It's not a bigger discussion, it could take five minutes if they wanted to discuss that. And again, the point is, is she's saying, this is, take it or leave it, this is what's in the policy, and which you're gonna vote for, so, just so you know. And so at that point, Bob Peterson could say, okay, well then we're gonna stop discussing this, and that's gonna be put in the policy. I mean, I don't think that's a good idea, but that's, that's what should be happening here. This is not a rubber stamp forum. This is one group of people, the board are in charge, this is, again, the group of the board is in charge, the whole thing, and then another group are supporting it. Now there may be power dynamics, and there may be all sorts of relationships and everything else, but it's not take it or leave it, you rubber stamp it, we'll tell you what we're gonna do, and then we'll get sort of around to telling you more about it. Because the best you get out of this board here is, will you pretty please tell us in year two, or, you know, who knows, about what you're gonna do? That's problematic.
To do, because we would have to be obligated to follow the tax rules in whatever state that that person is living in or where they're working from. So the out of state we have currently is not an option for those reasons, but I think we're open in this process.
Again, it is an option. That's the whole point. It is absolutely an option. All the board has to say is, make it happen. That's it. And do it now. It couldn't be more simple, that's how you make it an option. HR doesn't tell the board what the options are. The law does, and the citizens of the city of Milwaukee do. Those are the only two sources of input, and they're the experience of the representative directors, okay? But that doesn't seem like what's happening here.
...to see if we need to be more flexible, we understand the key word here is flexibility, and we understand the challenges when it comes to hiring, and if there is someone that, you know, can only, is only interested in doing remote, do we have to, like, consider that? Maybe, I think, we do value, and I think a lot of employers do, that you have some connection to, in person, than your colleagues, we value that one day a week, two days a week at least, you're around, you're working with your colleagues, meeting other members of the team and building that camaraderie, and I think we learn a lot there, so I think our intent is to have that hybrid model, but we're always open to looking if there's exceptions and, you know, a very high-need situation, and there's obviously work that the district needs to get done.
That was not an answer.
Thank you very much.
That was not an answer.
So noted.
Is there any other comments on this?
That's another thing I've never seen, is board members say that's not an answer, give me the answer to the question that I asked.
I know, it was a quick turnaround, and you incorporated my feedback, and I wanna thank you for that. I think there...
Again, how did this feedback come?
It was brought to my attention that the city has kind of a rather robust handbook...
Ah, other models.
...regarding remote work with policies and procedures. One section has specific criteria that supervisors would kind of do as a check-down to say this is a position that would be eligible to use, that kind of is like a, just a decision tree really, and I was hoping that, I'm fully in favor of voting for this tonight, and I'm hoping that we can have the criteria come back to us for review, maybe in the April board cycle, and...
Why vote for something if the criteria are not clear? You gotta be able to answer that, because it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. If it's not done, don't vote for it.
And if no one else is ready to make a motion, I can make a motion for accepting administration's recommendation...
Director Kyle looks like she's troubled.
...on this handbook provision, the revised version, and ask that a report comes back.
Tell us, Gokul Gandhi, for that matter.
Administration, how do you feel about that request?
Look at, look at that!
Mr. Chair?
She had something to say!
In order for further discussion, you do need a second motion.
Okay.
Look at these board members!
Check your card.
I'd like to add to that, or what's the process for adding to it? Because I wanna...
It's called an amendment, by the way. It's called an amendment.
...has been done within that remote work position. Can we add that too?
It's called an amendment.
Doesn't that make sense? I feel like there's crickets.
Okay, so there's two things here, and this is, all of these board members need to know Robert's Rules of Orders if they don't want to get run over by the administration and their secretary. They are the ones in charge, and they need to be, not only know them, they need to be so comfortable with them that they can stand up and advocate for their constituents without fear of being embarrassed or without any discomfort whatsoever. They owe that to their constituents, and they don't really have any business being board members if they don't know those rules, because they're getting played, okay? She needs to make an amendment, she's got, she needs, she's got all sorts of points of order that she needs to make, and there's jumbling all over things here. Now again, the whole motion in itself is, to my understanding, not ready, because it needed to have been sent back to the committee, because it was changed, the committee needs to review it, there needs to be public comment on it, which is the whole purpose, I believe, of why they're doing it like this, so Jackie Mann can avoid public comment, and then we can go from there. So that, I think, is the real problem, again, it's all goes back to the question of who's in charge, and if you don't know Robert's Rules of Orders, you're not in charge. So then, the next thing is, she's asking for support, she's asking for questions, Jackie Mann is her employee and needs, needed to have explained to her what to do. We'll see what happens. Bob Peterson is the president, he could have easily helped her out and supported her in doing that, but either he doesn't know Robert's Rules of Orders, or doesn't wanna support her, or both. I mean, this is, what she was asking, she was asking for help, and she didn't get it. And I think it's fair to say that everybody else in the room is working together to keep her question from being answered.
So over...
And I'm sorry, did we all catch that before, how board members were like timidly raising their hand, like this is third-grade MPS year? Like, no! You people are representatives of entire sections of the city of Milwaukee, of thousands and thousands of people. You don't go waving your hand, like, it's not, timidity is not the name of this game Wisconsin nice is also not the name, you're not gonna get things done, because you can see, we all know what happens, we can see how effective it is, it's not.
Report out an update on what is being done in that role, because...
And when she means role, she means Marla, what the heck is Marla Bruni doing? Because this is ridiculous, that's what she means, she's just not saying Marla Bruni's name. I don't know why she's self-centering, but she's definitely talking about Marla Bruni. That is to say, the lady who was the unaccountable chief, directly not responsible or not answerable to the director, deputy superintendent, like all the other chiefs, only answerable to Posle. She's also the one that Calvin Furman alleged repeatedly, and that they sought legal counsel, Miriam Horowitz did a whole report, and they did, of course, nothing about it, they all know that, that's why they're self-centering themselves. Then he was gonna give her some, you know, huge thousand hideaway job, and all they did was supposedly, you know, she's the director of remote work, so manager, whatever they're gonna call the title, I don't know, but she was supposed to get some thou, you know, hundreds of thousands, and they supposedly, you know, reduced that, but nobody can find any evidence of the fact that they've reduced it. So, you know, until they prove it here, we strongly suspect she's hiding out, collecting the money, and producing one page of underwhelming policy to date. You know, I'd like that kind of gig, I'll tell you what.
I am a bit bothered by the lack of what's being produced...
Then why vote for it?
...and I'd like to have an update on what that individual in that role is doing.
Marla, that's who she's talking about, Marla.
Secretary, we have a motion on the floor that has to be seconded, that's from...
It's the Chair.
It doesn't have to be seconded.
Members of the board, is that a second with...
See, here it comes.
Providing a second to the motion with additional reporting requirements around...
It's called an amendment, and it's not a second.
I need a little bit more clarity.
Because I guess she doesn't know what to do either.
...created sometime last year.
Marla.
And we have this remote work policy that is one-page.
The underwhelming one-page.
I'm asking what evaluation or what updates can you give us about the position?
Mr. Chair, Director Carr, so the productivity of the office.
No! What the heck is Marla doing? Just say it!
Productivity of the role.
And we see Posley sweating on the corner there.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Director Carr, given that this is a request...
Let's just note that she has not been recognized by President Peterson, President Peterson is no longer running the meeting at all, and Jackie Mann is.
For policy, and I believe the request is being asked more of an evaluatory nature or a productivity report, that would be additional information that could be asked of the administration separate from this...
It could, but it didn't happen like that.
There are two different categories, this is the work product versus evaluation or productivity.
I agree with that.
Well, thank you, Bob Peterson, but that's, again, that's not how that works. I, when I was there at the meeting, I couldn't see her face, and, man, they don't believe it, do they? Look at them, the assistant board clerk doesn't believe it, and Jackie Mann doesn't believe what she's selling, but it was already bought.
So I request it, or I just go straight to them, and then we report out on the board, because that's what I'm asking.
Right, why don't you all, why doesn't Jackie Mann answer the director's question?
I think passing this policy position is important, and I think what you're suggesting is also important, but the start would be to ask the superintendent, and then to, depending on the nature of the situation, bring it back to the board, you know, okay?
No! No! No, that's not how, you don't go to this, you don't have one board member go to the superintendent and say, hey guys, can you do this for me? I'd sure appreciate it. You have the board... You have the board make a uh uh the board member makes a motion, another board that this happened. Another board member seconds it and then there's a vote. And if that vote wins, then the superintendent better do it. That's how that works. And cause this is, you know, number one, they don't know. And number two, it's not happening. And why again, okay, Director Carr doesn't know what's going on. I get it. But there are people in the room who are paid to give them this answer and they are giving them another answer, not the answer that they're asking for. That's significant.
A second.
Okay, so the mo- there's been a motion made and seconded to to approve this, asking the administration to come back with any tweaks in or detail, more details uh about the policy or uh procedures in the April cycle, okay? Yes, Director Gokul Gandhi.
Um so I quickly pulled up what the city of Milwaukee, what their it's a
Wow, she's already done more work than Marla has done.
Many of the
And seconds.
Listed here are things we should include. So for example, what defines remote work? You know, there's many types of models of remote work. There's hybrid, there's two days in person. Um I would like details of what that looks like, you know, a more detailed account of position eligibility. What are we, what is, what, how do you become eligible for that? Like if I was an employee of the district, I would look at this and I don't know that I would get much information on that.
And and so they're willing to allow that condition to happen until April. That's they they know that it's an untenable position and they appear to be willing to pass it anyway.
Um what is the actual employee request?
Oh, there it goes. There it goes. Now Director Carr is gonna get a talking to. We can see are short for that. Uh but there we go. I mean, beyond being completely inappropriate, it's this should be in public if there's any communication that needs to happen. Um i- i- it's sure, I think, shows who's running the board.
Who do I ask? Do I fill out a form? Do I ask my manager first? Um what is the supervisor's responsibility? So I mean, so one, I think
Why is that discussion that's going on there between Director Carr and Man not happening in public?
Districts are doing and how we compare um in the big five. Um and I just, so to add to this, I just, we need a way more robust product.
So I'm gonna call on Director Carr right now to tell the public what happened in that conversation. Um I I think it's e- extremely important. Uh it needs to be on the public record and we need to be clear uh what Jackie Man communicated to uh Director Carr at that point. Um democracy can't happen like that.
If that comes back to us, because I ju- this, I don't, I can't really glean much from what is listed here.
So why vote for it, Director? Then why vote for it? I mean, you said it, it's hard for people to take you seriously when you say that something is unacceptable and then you're considering voting for it anyway.
Administration.
Wow, she's still getting talked to.
Chair Peterson, members of the board Adrian Madelany, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Wow.
Let's be clear, th- this is uh the remote work program, the the provision, this is for a handbook. Um we don't get that specific on the details in our handbook. You can look, our handbook in total is is thirty pages. Um there is a a guidance document that's attached that would go along with the form. They'll have a lot of the details that you're saying will have more information, so happy to share that and and that can provide some clarity to it.
They haven't.
Since this is really a handbook provision.
There's a secret policy? I'm sorry, at this time I was busy videotaping Jackie Man talking to uh sc- scolding, what it sure looks like to me, Director Carr. Um I did not catch that before. That's pretty shocking. So she's saying there's a secret policy notes uh and it doesn't sound like the board even has that.
We try not to get um too detailed with regards to um the process and procedures and things, but um to your point, those things um should be addressed and and will be addressed.
That's, you know, if I was a student, I would love to do that. It's like, uh, you know, hey, teacher, I know, let me give you like a one-page paper now and then sometime in April, I'll get back to you with some kind of details. Okay, wouldn't that be fun? How about um teacher, I know I just gave you one page, but there's this secret document that I can't show you, I haven't shown you, and that's got all the right answers on it, so you're just gonna have to trust me on that one A pluses for me. Thank you very much. Wow, um there's truly one standard for uh students and another standard for administration. And you know, how are they supposed to? This is does not seem to me to be adult behavior.
Thank you. Go ahead, Director Gokul Gandhi.
So just a follow-up. So the things I listed right now, are those in the guidance or they're not in the gu- and I guess maybe if you could just share the guidance with us, that would have been helpful.
Uh how about required? How about stop the meeting now, you have a secret policy document, you're fired. Let's have a board meeting on, I vote that you're fired. I move, I guess, and then we'll find, get somebody who can do the job properly and give us all the documents in front of us before they ask us to vote. Anybody who does that again is gonna get fired as well. Is there anything that's unclear about that? How about try that? That's my suggestion. Jeez, this is not a way to run an organization.
Administration.
Chair Peterson, members of the board Adrian Madelany, Chief Human Resources Officer. Um yes, some of the items are there. I'm here clear. We have the definitions here. It identifies that the remote work program is only up to three days a week.
So.
Um we have some of those definitions here and it's in the guidance document. Um how you go about requesting it is in 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 the guidance document. There's some information um on criteria supervisors supposed to be looking.
So uh public records request is, I guess the key term here is guidance document. Uh so people who wanna get the real information on policies uh at uh MPS, I guess are also gonna wanna ask for the guidance document so they can know what the actual instructions are. Um so that's just a a little tip that we learned here, but thank you uh guys.
Looking at, um what are the expectations supervisor, what are the expectations of the employee when they work remotely? They have to have a suitable work environment, they have to maintain a regular schedule, those type of things, a lot of.
And I I look at Matt Chason up there. I it to me, it's just pure fiction and theater that he's working really, I mean, Posley doesn't appear to be doing anything. Uh you know, occasionally he's looking over at me and uh mean mugging me and so forth and you know, nice to see back to Posley. Um it was a fun night, but um Matt Chason there is sitting like he's like just working away an eager beaver for the workers here. He's just gonna get some accountability and efficiency, by gosh. Um you know, but we saw what happened, the di- I mean what's the point? What's the point, Matt? What's the point?
That information is there. Um it's uh not everything that's in the the city's um document. Um also would like to add, we did um consult uh uh with other um school districts in in the big five regarding um remote work. Um they don't have a fourteen-page document. Um some of them are are it's limited. Um we have looked and we're happy to share that information with you um when we report back in April on the specifics of what the others districts do.
Oh my God, that means they haven't actually done it yet.
Yeah, I look forward to an update.
Great. Okay, seeing no other com- uh hands up, uh could we please take the roll?
There was plenty of other hands up that didn't happen. Board, I want to be sure that I've captured the motion and that is to move approval of the administration's recommendation relative to the item as outlined in the revised attachment to this item with
But not the policy that you want.
Report of criteria to be brought back to the board in April.
Um I that is the motion I made. I since I don't I don't know if we need to have a substitute motion made that would incorporate more of the feedback that Director Gokul Gandhi just requested to come back in April, so if um if it needs to be spelled out, I would
Spell it out.
A substitute motion. No, she's shaking her head. Um so but from uh the office of our governance or the administration's standpoint.
Yeah, and you could hear Bob Peterson say that he didn't want he wasn't gonna have any pressure be put on the board. You could hear that, yeah, that's what that meant. We weren't gonna require them to do anything specific.
We need to be a bit more explicit with what we're requesting.
Yes, you do.
Happy to list that.
I I think that between the conversation with Director Gokul Gandhi and administration, it's clear that there's it's not just one item, it's
Okay.
A ver- a ver-
That's not how it works. It's not just boards vote. She's just one director. She doesn't have any authority to say anything to management. She can tell her what she might like to hear, that's all great, but she is one board member. Maybe all the rest of the board members think that that's a bad idea. Maybe they think it's the best idea ever. But unless and until they have a vote, it's not the decision of the board. He knows that.
Variety of issues that will be uh detailed, if that's okay, so.
Mister Chair, members of the board, hearing Director Carr's request and uh Director Gokul Gandhi's um additional information request, the motion would need to be amended to um read that uh moving approval of the administration's recommendation as outlined in the revised attachment to this item with a report further detailing um the criteria and other items related to the development of the remote work policy.
I mean, that's with something.
And that leaves it open to include
Mm-hmm.
All of the comments that were um stated tonight and any additional information that the administration would like to provide. Okay.
Let's hold the roll.
On the motion as read.
You can hear the enthusiasm.
Carr.
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director Gokul Gandhi?
Aye.
Director Leonard?
Aye.
Director O'Halloran?
Aye.
Director Simpson?
Aye.
President Peterson?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, the motion passes.
Secretary, what's the next item?
Wow.
The next item set aside.
That is, there you have it. Uh democracy in action, everybody. Um serious adults, seriously considering serious issues about our pupils. Thank you very much. Thanks for sticking with us, with us. We'll keep you informed.